Real call has been taken.
Yes, sir.
All right, move into adoption of the agenda.
So move, your honor.
Mr. Barrington. Motion been made by Ms. Barrington. Who seconded it? Mr. Herter, any additions or corrections? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approval of seven nineteen twenty twenty-two common council minutes and seven nineteen twenty twenty-two committee of the whole minutes.
So move.
Motion been made by Mr. Herter, seconded by Mr. Beesaw. Any further comments or corrections? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, Mr. Fache, can you authorize the bills?
Your honor, I move to approve authorization to pay bills in the amount of one million, one hundred sixty-six thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars.
Motion been made by Mr. Fache, seconded by Mr. Beesaw to pay the bills. Any additions or corrections to that? Please cast your ballots. Dennis? One more. Perfect. Motion carried, nine zero. All right, being seven oh one, we'll move into the public hearing regarding zoning of newly annexed property that is owned by Carew of PM Enterprises at seventeen eighteen Mill Street. Any public input? Any public comment? Is there any public comment? There being no public comment, we will close the public hearing. Next on the agenda is the public comment. Any public comment? Any further public comment? No public comment? All right, here are none. We'll move on. Standing in special committees, we'll start off with the Board of Public Works, Mr. Barrington.
Thank you. Board of Public Works met on Monday, August first, twenty twenty-two. Members present: Barrington, Richie Herter, Dorsey, Haas, council members: Mayor Herter, Bob Beesaw, Fache, Roberts, Melinda Croy, others: Chad Hirth, Robert Garsky, Ginger Arndt, Ben Gruehl, Jane Murphy. Meeting called. The order at four forty-five. No changes worked to the agenda. There was no public input. Waste water treatment plant update. Waste water treatment plant notes were included in the packet, and Ben spoke later in the meeting. The next item was present Municipal Code ten point zero three sub five amendment. Public Works Director Garsky presented and recommended the ordinance amending Municipal Code ten point zero three sub zero five to reflect the height change of noxious grass and weeds from one foot to eight inches. Motion made and seconded to recommend to council approval to amend Municipal Code ten point zero three sub zero five to reflect the height change of noxious weeds and grass from one foot to eight inches. Motion carried by all. The next, we discussed and approved fees for compliance to Municipal Code ten point zero three sub five. Public Works Director Garsky presented and requested approval to start using the set rate fee of one hundred seventy-five dollars for the first hour of work performed for non-compliance to Municipal Code ten point zero three sub five. After the first hour, the fee would be seventy-five dollars for every half hour thereafter. The flat rate starting fee and a half hour fee will be added to a future fee schedule. A copy of the compliance letter sent to residents in violation of Municipal Code ten point zero three sub five is also included in the packet. Motion made and seconded for the approval to begin using the set fees for non-compliance to Municipal Code ten point zero three sub five. Motion carried by all. The next item was approval to hire Industrial Roofing Services Incorporated to create bid specifications and oversee construction of hail damage repairs to council buildings. Public Works Director Garsky presented and requested approval to hire Industrial Roofing Services Incorporated to bid out and manage the repair of hail damage to city facilities. The city's insurance carrier, MPIC, will cover the entire cost. The packet will include an itemized cost for each structure. Motion made and seconded for approval to hire Industrial Roofing Services Incorporated to bid out and manage the repair of hail damage to city facilities. Motion carried by all. The next item was discussion on revocable occupancy permit for structures that extend into the city right-of-way for the downtown North Water Street reconstruction. Revocable occupancy permit is included in the packet because the North Water Street reconstruction is a DOT project. It falls under DOT guidelines, and by using revocable occupancy permit, it indicates that the city recognizes enroachment of structures in the right-of-way. It will be the city's responsibility to fill out the permit for each enroachment structure and file these with the county clerk. Motion made and seconded to ask the council's approval to allow city staff to issue revocable occupancy permits for any property that has a structure or structures in the right-of-way and file with the county. Motion carried, nine to one. Roberts abstaining. Next was a discussion to hire Heritage Research Limited to prepare an assessment of effects documentation for the Old City Hall and the Grand Theater. The proposal from Heritage Research Limited is included in the packet. Old City Hall and the Grand Theater qualify for the National Registry. The next step in the process is for Heritage Research Limited to prepare an assessment of effects document for both properties. Motion made and seconded to prepare not this would not exceed five thousand, six hundred and nine dollars and fifty cents. Motion carried by all. Director's report. The director's memo included in the agenda packet and was reviewed by the board. Service anniversary: Luke Hammond Streets and Park Superintendent. Spend your seven years. Ava and Lima and Lion Street reconstruction is wrapping up the storm sewer construction phase. Street crew replaced the failing covert on Spur Road. For future items, we'll discuss wastewater treatment plant wages and expenses for rate study. We'll discuss about large item disposable services. We'll have a discussion regarding uncontrolled intersections. Some concerns have been noted for Smith Street. Next Public Works meeting will be held Tuesday, September sixth, twenty twenty-two, at four forty-five, with Park and Rec meeting to be held immediately followed. Motion made and seconded to adjourn the meeting at five twenty-five. I recommend an ordinance amending Municipal Code ten point zero three zero five to reflect the height change of noxious grass and weeds from one foot to eight inches. This will be the first reading.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Barrington, seconded by Mr. Herter for ordinance amending Municipal Code one zero point zero three subsection five to reflect the height change of noxious grass and weeds from one foot to eight inches. First reading. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. That motion's carried, eight zero, or nine zero.
I move to approve issue of revocable occupancy permits for any property that has a structure in the right-of-way.
Motion made by Mr. Barrington, seconded by Mr. Beesaw for approval of issuance of revocable occupancy permits for any property that has structures in the right-of-way. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Mr. Beesaw? That motion is carried, eight and one abstained. Thank you.
I make a motion to approve the hiring of Heritage Research Limited to prepare an assessment of adverse effects document for both Old City Hall and the Grand Theater. This not to exclude the cost of five thousand, six hundred and nine dollars and fifty cents.
Motion made by Mr. Barrington, seconded by Mr. Fache to approve the hiring of Heritage Research LTD to prepare an assessment of adverse effects documents for both Old City Hall and the Grand Theater, not to exceed in five thousand, six hundred and nine dollars and fifty cents. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. That motion is carried, nine zero.
I make a motion to approve the contract with Industrial Roofing Services Incorporated for repair of the roofs due to hail damage.
Second.
Motion been made by Ms. Barrington, seconded by Mr. Haas to approve contract with Industrial Roofing Services, Inc. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. That motion's also carried, nine zero.
That is all I have tonight, your honor.
Thank you, Mr. Barrington. Moving right along into finance and personnel, Mr. Fache, you're up.
Finance and Personnel Committee met Wednesday, August third, at five fifteen P.M. in the council chambers. Members present: Dorsey, Fache, Barrington, Roberts, and Beesaw. Also present were Mayor Mark, Herter, Alderman John Haas, and alderperson, alderwoman, Melinda Croy, City Administrator Chad Hirth, Finance Director Judy Radke, and Mapping and Media Specialist Missy Kempin, joined via Zoom. The meeting was called to order by Chairman Dave Dorsey at five fifteen P.M. Motion was made by Roberts and seconded by Barrington to approve the agenda, carried eight zero. Finance Director Radke outlined the human resource intern position description. This individual, the individual who fills the position will be a Fox Valley Technical College student. The purpose of the position is to assist the human resource payroll coordinator in those tasks outlined in the job description. The human in the human resource intern position would be funded in the night in the twenty twenty-two by the savings within the Clerk Treasury Budget category. Motion was made by Roberts and seconded by Beesaw to recommend to council the hiring of the human resource intern. Motion carried, eight zero. Mapping and Media Specialist Missy Kempin addressed the need to replace the council member electronic devices. To be able to fund the purchase, Finance Director Radke recommended the use of the technology designated funds. Motion was made by Roberts and seconded by Beesaw to recommend to council the replacement of council devices on an as-needed basis up to eight thousand dollars. That motion carried, eight zero. Administrator Hirth and Finance Director Radke talked about new revenue sources for the twenty twenty-three budget. Fees, referendum, potential tip increment, and road utility were discussed. Finance Chair Dorsey recommended this conversation continue to be included on the September Finance Agenda. The Finance Director's monthly reports were presented. Finance Director's report was discussed. There being no public comment or further business, motion was made by Roberts and seconded by Fache to adjourn at six forty-five P.M. Motion carried, eight zero. The next regularly scheduled finance meeting will be held in the council chambers on September seventh at five fifteen P.M. With that, I'd like to move for consideration of hiring of a human resource intern.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Fache, and I didn't catch who seconded, by Mr. Roberts. For consideration of hiring a human resource intern, any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. That motion is carried, nine zero.
Next, your honor, I would move to approve the replacement of council devices on an as-needed basis up to eight thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Fache, seconded by Ms. Croy for approval of replacement of council devices on an as-needed basis up to eight thousand dollars. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. That motion is carried, nine zero.
And lastly, your honor, I would move to approve the monthly license list for August.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Fache, seconded by Mr. Barrington for approval of the monthly license list. Please cast your ballots. That motion is also carried, nine zero. Thank you, Mr. Fache. We will move along with Park and Recreation. Mr. Beesaw?
Thank you, your honor. Park and Rec Committee met on Monday, August first. Committee members present were Beesaw, Fache, Haas, Richie, Rachel Schuler, student member, and Jim Jaeger, citizen member. Council members present were Mayor Mark Herter, Aldermen Mike Barrington, Dave Dorsey, Tim Roberts, Dennis Herter, and Melinda Croy. Others present were Ginger Arndt, Director of Park and Rec, Robert Garsky, Director of Public Works, Chad Hirth, City Administrator, Jane Murphy, Public Service Administrative Assistant. Meeting was called to order at five thirty. Motion was moved to approve the agenda. Motion was carried by all. Public input, there was none presented. Youth sports agreement fee policy approval. The athletic facilities reservation and use policy draft is included with the packet. The fee schedule has been defined, and the committee was happy with the set fees. Herter made the motion, Haas moved for approval of the city and the London Athletic Facilities Reservation and Use Policy. The motion was carried by all. That'll be brought to council. Director's report was included in the agenda packet and reviewed by the committee. Service anniversary: Robert Cupp, Senior Transit Driver, three years, August fifth. Chairman's report, there was none presented. Committee members' report, none presented. Future agenda items discussed providing public use Wi-Fi at Pfeifer, Hatton, and Memorial Parks. Twenty twenty-three fee policy on schedule. Next Park and Rec meeting will be held on Tuesday, September sixth, at four forty-five of the Public Works. No, that's not correct. Supposed to be Public Works first and Park and Rec following. Meeting was, there was no further discussion. Motion was made by Fache, seconded by Haas, moved to adjourn at seven forty-seven. Motion was carried by all. I would look for approval for the youth sports agreement fee policy approval.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Beesaw, seconded by Mr. Barrington for approval of the city of New London Athletic Facilities Reservation and Use Policy. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried, nine zero. And Mr. Beesaw, we'll get that corrected on the minutes as well. You can continue to stay in the hot seat and do the planning commission.
City of London Planning Commission met on Thursday, July twenty-eighth. Those in attendance were Chairman Beesaw, Jason Basset, Donna Gabbert, Susan Steingrabber, Mayor Mark Herter, and Jamie Walbrook. Others in attendance: Building Inspector, Zoning Administrator, Dave Vincent, City Administrator Chad Hirth, Melinda Croy, District Two, Mark Barrington, District Five, and from the public, Lee Shaw, representative from Town of Muckaw. Jordan Rose, representing Points of Beginning, and Justin Deem, no affiliation listed. The meeting was called to order at five fifteen. Group participated in the pledge of allegiance. A motion was made by Gabbert to adopt the agenda, and seconded by Basset, carried by all. April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, meeting minutes were reviewed. A motion to accept the minutes was made by Basset and seconded by Steingrabber, is carried by all. First item on the agenda was the detachment, de-annexation of a property with the current address of nineteen oh five Starlight Drive and a parcel number of thirty-three dash fourteen dash seven one one five one. A motion was made to recommend the approval of the detachment to council for consideration. Motion was made by Gabbert and seconded by Steingrabber, carried by all. The proposed CSM certified survey map for the First State Bank project was presented by Dave Vincent. The proposal would combine four existing lots on Lincoln and Olpaca Streets with a fifty-foot or so section of the southern portion of the Southern West parcel split off to create a separate parcel. A motion was made by Walbrook to approve the CSM and seconded by Steingrabber, was carried by all. The next item was a proposal to adopt a new wellhead protection plan and move it from the utility code to the zoning code. Jay Basset explained the process and the goal of the plan to protect wells within the city from contamination, et cetera. The plan was generated by a representative of the Wisconsin Rural Water Association, of which in London is a member. A motion to recommend approval to send to council for consideration was made by Gabbert, seconded by Steingrabber, carried by all, with the exception of Basset abstained. A facade improvement proposal was submitted to the commission for replacing existing mirrored panels along the street side of the building at four oh one West North Water Street, Living Waters Assembly of God. The owner provided a mock-up to represent the finished covering for consideration. The zoning administrator stated that the proposal would fit within the guidelines specified in the zoning ordinance. A motion to approve the facade improvement was made by Gabbert, seconded by Steingrabber, carried by all. The next topic was a discussion about creating an ordinance that would allow chickens in residential zone parcels. The zoning administrator was tasked with creating an ordinance for consideration. Future agenda items are continuance of the comprehensive plan project, site plan for First State Bank, and continued discussion of creating a chicken ordinance. A motion was made to adjourn by Gabbert, seconded by Steingrabber, carried by all. Meeting was adjourned at approximately five fifty-four. That's all I have, Matt, your honor. I would look for considering waiving the rules to adopt an ordinance upon one reading requiring approval of detachment by ordinance within sixty days.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Beesaw, seconded by Mr. Herter. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried, nine zero.
I would look for consideration of detachment of a property with the current address of nineteen oh five Starlight Drive and a parcel number of thirty-three dash fourteen dash seven one one five one. Requires a three-quarter bolt.
Motion been made by Mr. Beesaw. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Herter has a second. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. That motion carried, nine zero.
I would look for an ordinance repealing section thirteen dash zero eight two wellhead protection replacement with section seventeen dot one one seven wellhead protection. First reading.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Beesaw, seconded by Mr. Barrington. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. That motion carries, nine zero.
And last one, the ordinance, it's owning newly annexed property that is owned by Carew of PM Enterprises at seventeen eighteen Mill Street as of B dash two highway commercial. First reading.
Motion made by Mr. Beesaw. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Richie. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. That motion is also carried, nine zero.
That's all I have, your honor.
Thank you, Mr. Beesaw. Next on the agenda is Economic Development Committee. Mr. Haas will be taking that over.
Yep, thanks, your honor. The London Economic Development Committee held its meetings July, Tuesday, July twenty-second, July twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two. Members present were Dorsey, Fache, Pitsky, Haas, Thompson, Bishop, Croy, Adamovich, excuse, Zacharias. Other presence: Mayor Mark Herter, via Zoom, Tim Roberts, Bob Beesaw, City Administrator Chad Horth, Jeff Hunzki, Jeff Mikorski, Bill Zeiner, Kerry, and Larry Kaderzinski. The meeting was called to order by Chairman Dorsey at five fifteen. Motion was made and seconded to approve the agenda, carried by all. Chairman Dorsey introduced and welcomed Adam Wyatt Adamovich to the committee's newest student representative. The May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two minutes were reviewed. Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes, carried by all. Next, Jeff Mikorski and Bill Reiner, with the Olpaca County Economic Development Corporation, provided an update to the corporation's co-op marketing efforts in the county. The co-op is funded collectively by all the major municipalities in Olpaca County. There has been a strategic shift from initial marketing campaign on promoting tourism to worker and resident recruitment. Additional focus has been used to create content for new platforms like TikTok. Year-to-date, in two thousand twenty-two, the marketing efforts have created over five hundred thousand impressions and over three hundred thousand views on Facebook and YouTube for various marketing messages. Mikorski stressed the importance of creating new content on a regular basis to refresh the message as old content falls off, and the newest contact is newest content is typically pushed by social media platforms. The corporation will continue to research new ways to continue social media marketing for the countywide promotions. Next, Mayor Mark informed the committee that he was approached by seven individuals who were requesting for the city to refocus efforts and sign a charter declaring New London as a sister city with Killaloo, Ireland. Kerry and Larry Kaderzinski provided some history on the initial process for the relations with Killaloo and its mayor, Tony O'Brien. Several New London residents have visited Killaloo over the years and have continued to strengthen that relationship. When asked what the expectations of the city would be, the Kaderzinski responded by saying there is no blueprint outline one must be done when declaring a sister city. It's whatever you want to do to create that connection. Or it was suggested that the minimum to install a signage at the main entrances of the city advertising that relationship. When asked why the charter wasn't signed when first proposed, the response was there was rumors and misinformation spread that city officials would travel to Killaloo on a city's expense, which was not true and not expected to create that relationship. The charter would be signed independently by city officials in their respective cities. Bishop made the motion, seconded by Capitzki, to recommend to the council a resolution authorize the mayor to sign a charter declaring New London, Wisconsin a sister city with Killaloo, Ireland. Motion carried by all. Next, Alderman Croy presented a marketing idea to promote New London and local businesses by creating a unified hashtag for the city. To encourage people to use that hashtag, ideas were presented to create a scavenger hunt with a regular social media post and prize drawings. Croy suggested creating a subcommittee to further brainstorm and define the program. It was suggested to possibly have a high school's DECA program to participate. Adamovich will contact DECA and ask about their interest in the project. Next up, Horst, Mr. Horst presented some information about the city's billboard and a cost on replacing the message wrap. The last time the message was replaced, the city financed one side and the tourism commission financed the other. The committee seemed interested in to continue using the billboard to market New London. Agreed to place a cost to replace the message wrap in the two thousand twenty-three budget request. And Horst asked to have a look into what would cost to install a digital sign to allow different messages. to install a digital sign to allow different messages on a rotated, on a regular basis. Next was the Chamber Director's Business Report. A new business called Smoke World Vape moved into 1923 North Shano Street. There is a sign on the former Buckeyes Restaurant building saying Zero's Cafe coming soon. No other details as of yet. Nails by Dorothy LLC is moving into the former Water Street Boutique at 218 West North Water Street. The former XS, XF, or FX Auto Collision Center at 800 North Shano Street is now the Plax Collision Center. Boss Mam Aesthetics LLC is moving into 108 West North Water Street, which was a former Ameriprise building. City Administrator report. A development agreement with SC Swiderski has been verbally agreed upon and is in process of being executed. Process for the downtown reconstruction project continues. Throughout the planning process, it has been determined that the sanitary sewers and water main replacements will need to be done in 2023 due to the anticipated high water tables in the spring of 2024. The city has purchased a vacant lot at 225 North Water Street with intent to create additional parking for the downtown. Staff are working on updating the city's comprehensive plan and have a survey online for public input. East Center, Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission is offering a free technical assistance program. Mr. Horth will apply for the program with intent to do some planning for the downtown River Alley. The committee reviewed speakers and agenda items for future meetings. Public input. Mayor Mark commented on the efforts to educate public and noted positive feedback seen on social media. The next committee meeting will be scheduled for Tuesday, August 30th, 2022 at 5:15 PM. Motion is made and seconded to adjourn the meeting at 6:53. Motion carried by all. Next on the table here is the WCEDC, August 22, 2022, Municipal Memo. It's in your pack. Next is a resolution to consider the City of New London, Wisconsin approving a sister city affiliation with the Village of Killaloo County Clare, Ireland.
Second.
You want, would you care to read that, please?
Yep. We'll get there, I gotta read the whole thing first.
All right.
Whereas a sister city program is a national initiative begun by President Eisenhower in 1956 to develop economic, culture, and technical exchanges between US cities, countries, and states with corresponding communities worldwide. And whereas the program promotes peace through mutual respect, understanding, and cooperation through one individual, one community at a time. And whereas the community ties of mutual interest exist between the City of New London, Wisconsin, and the Village of Killaloo County Clare, Ireland. And whereas the exchange of said interests and cultures by the mutual establishments of the sister city relationship with the Village of Killaloo Clare, Ireland will enhance the City of New London and its residents. And whereas, under the sister city relationship, both municipalities commit to support and encourage opportunities by mutual beneficial and practical exchanges in the fields of business, arts, culture, education, sports, and tourism. And whereas, the mayor and the city council find established of the sister city affiliation with the Village of Killaloo Clare County, Ireland will be the best interest of the City of New London. Now, therefore, it will be resolved by the mayor and the city council of the City of New London, Wisconsin, does hereby approve and authorize execution of a charter to establish a sister city affiliation with the Village of Killaloo Clare County, Ireland, adopted this 16th day of August, 2022. So I guess I'm looking for a resolution to establish a sister city affiliation with the Village of Killaloo, Ireland.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Haas, seconded by Mr. Barrington for resolution establishing a sister city affiliation with the Village of Killaloo, Ireland. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. That motion is carried nine zero.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. With that, we'll move into minutes and reports distributed in your packets and will stand as read. Keeping the train moving, we'll do reports of officers on recent events and announcements to the public. Starting off with my announcements. The only thing I have this month is to say thank you for your time and service for all of our employees with anniversaries this month. We'll move on to the city administrator, Mr. Horth.
Thank you, Your Honor. First off, just an update now that that resolution to designate a sister city with Killaloo has passed. We did just receive the actual twinning charter designated to start that new relationship. The mayor will be signing that charter and the timing actually worked out really good that this Thursday, in two days, I will be in Milwaukee at a training and 20 minutes away from that, Tony O'Brien, who is the mayor of Killaloo County Clare, will be at a dinner with other representatives, several people from the New London. So we'll be able to take that charter down there and get it signed after the mayor signs it on Thursday. So by the end of this week, we will have that charter signed and we can start the process of designating and declaring our first sister city in New London, which is really kinda cool. A separate effort on a planning efforts, the city continues to work on the progress to update the city's comprehensive plan. I reported last month that we were looking at having a survey put on the city's website. That survey is on the city's website. So we're asking citizens for input on future planning efforts for New London. So if anybody's interested, please go to the city's website, newlondonwi.org, and on the homepage you'll find the survey under News and Announcement sections that you can fill out. And we appreciate that everybody takes an opportunity just to fill that out and give us input for how we are going to work on city progress for the next 10 years. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Horth. Next on the agenda is the Chief of Police, Mr. Schlitter.
Thank you, Your Honor. First off, I'd like to thank everyone for all their hard work putting together National Night Out, a lot of departments from our city. Put a lot of time and effort in that, we had a great turnout that evening. And also, I'd like to thank Keller Structures and Northern Electric. I got a call yesterday, they invited me to a ceremony on October 7th over in Kacona where they're gonna be donating $2,500 to the police department. So thanks to both those agencies and appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schlitter. Moving right along, Director of Public Works, Mr. Garsky.
Thank you, Your Honor. Construction on Avon, Lima, and Lion Street has entered the base course reconstruction phase. They're removing the bag clay base in the center of the street. After they remove that clay, they put down fabric and a geogrid an inch and a half stolen over that. They bring the millings, which if you live over there, you see pushed to the side. They bring the millings back over the top and shape the street. They have completed this step on Avon and are now working on Lima Street. The concrete phase of that project is also wrapping up as well. In the coming weeks, the street department will be out fixing some bad structures in the street. These structures are manhole castings and riser rings that support those castings. Some are found mid-block, but most of them are found in the intersection. If you see equipment working in the intersection, please try to go around the block. The structures on the center line make the work zone become very tight to get by. If you do travel past the crew, please slow down to go around. And that's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Garsky. Director of Park and Recreation, Ms. Arnt, I do not see her in the audience. Does she have a report there for anybody?
No report tonight.
All right. And then Fire Chief, Mr. Wilfer, and I do not see him in the audience. Mr. Ritchie, you have a report, thank you.
Okay, last month, we had two anniversaries. One was Donnie Conant for 44 years and Dave Stibbs had 13. This month, we got four. Brandon Whitick's got 10. Kale Wilfer's got six. Tyler Guyette's got six. And Alan Williams has got one. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Ritchie. With that, we'll conclude with their motion to adjourn.
So move.
Mr. Roberts made the motion, who seconded?
I'll second.
Mr. Herter seconded? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.